Okay, I would like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. And if we could have our students from the high school who are going to lead us in the pledge, come in please. Okay. We have with us this evening members of our SAD group from the high school. And they are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And they are also part of our True Blue Moment. So they will be speaking in a few minutes after the meeting starts. We have with us our very own Haley Fortuna, Olivia Iskra, David Caltz, Emily Caltz, Autumn Warren, and Jessica Weaver. And we thank them very much for being with us tonight. And if it's time, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Okay, next is our mission statement. Chris?
Okay. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I'll go ahead and take roll call. Dan and Jeff are absent with notice. Tracy?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
I am here. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Next would be a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is approval of the consent agenda personnel report. A motion would be in order to approve that.
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
We have two of our staff members who have resigned recently. Dennis Kozakowski was our criminal justice and he had to resign for some personal reasons. He was one of our new hires. We are in the process of finalizing and looking for a candidate to fill that position for those students that take the criminal justice class. And then Megan McClanahan was a crossing guard at Willa Lee. She resigned that position. That position is actually posted and not yet filled. Mr. Kochen has been out there a couple of days and doing a fine job, I might say. But we also have some new hires. Unfortunately, the new hires were not able to be here tonight. Tina Kraus is one of our childcare caregivers. We actually are getting ready to post for another one because our afternoon numbers are growing, continue to grow in the childcare program. And then Dawn Shear is a food service, one of our food service members resigned. She's actually expecting. So congratulations to her and her family. And Dawn has been a substitute for us and does a phenomenal job. So we look forward to her joining the middle school food service team.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our True Blue Moment. This is a time at every meeting that we set aside to honor and recognize great things that are happening in our district. And tonight, we have the members of SAD who are going to tell us a little bit about their group and what they do.
Hello, my name is Olivia Iskra. I was a secretary for SAD last year. The objective of our club is to create a positive environment at Richmond High School and promote students to make smart choices and provide them with information if they feel like they need any help. The first meeting was fantastic. We had 61 people sign up for the club. That's 20 more than last year.
Good for you.
Hi, I'm Emily Caltz. I was a trustee last year for SAD. Each year, we represent a president, or we elect a president, a vice president, a secretary, trustees, and a treasurer. And we are electing this Thursday.
I'm Jessica Weaver. Last year, I was a graphic designer. I'm going to talk about homecoming because we focus on not drinking and driving because we know that kids are going to go out and make those decisions. But we really want them to try to stay off the roads and everything and stay smart and everybody to be safe. We're going to make locker signs and poems about making good decisions. And we pass out candy after every dance with a positive quote. Last year, our quote was, "You're worth more than $100,000. Don't drink and drive on a little $100,000 bar." And every student got one after the dance. So we'll be doing the same thing this year.
Very good.
Hi, I'm David Caltz. We do a bake sale every year to help the Sandy's Kids Foundation. And it helps families get presents for their children because they can't afford them. So we'll be doing that during parent-teacher conferences.
Very good.
All right, thank you so much for listening to what our organization has to say. That's all we have.
Thank you. Thanks for the work you guys do, too. That's, it is very important. And good for you to have that many more kids wanting to join. That's, that's a good sign. There really is.
It's good to see all the freshmen coming in and what they know about.
Yeah, that is cool.
Awesome.
Very good.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to say one thing before.
Yeah.
Before you, ladies and gentlemen, leave. You know, as an incoming, as a parent of an incoming freshman, it's important for our students to identify with positive role models and feel connected to the school for success. And I'm speaking on behalf of, I guess, all freshman parents. But I know my daughter, when she was looking at clubs, spoke about SAD and what they did. And she left, whatever little information you guys provided, she left there as, this is a positive group for doing good things for kids. And I can't thank you guys enough for what you do, not only for the incoming kids, but all the kids here. Because we care about our kids and we want them safe. And the message that you can do from a peer to peer is tremendous. And it has a lot of impact on kids. So thank you.
Next, Board of Education Student Representative Report.
As always, I'll begin with the elementary school. The elementary school has their first student council meeting this Wednesday. The fourth grade bus buddies have received their safety patrol belts in their assignments. And the code blue ticket winners, they had an ice cream with the principal day on September 16th. And they had a recess after school with the principal on September 23rd. So Mr. Kochen's doing a good job there. Now to the middle school. Their student government elections are approaching shortly, so they have their signs. And they're, they campaign at the middle school. That's a lot of fun. They're excited to take part in the homecoming festivities. The elementary school will be doing that, too. I'll talk about that more later on in my report. And the seventh and eighth grade football team and the girls' basketball teams, they're really, they're off to a great start for middle school sports this year. High school, our boys soccer team is doing great this season. They only have one loss, I believe. Our football team, we did great at K-Pac. I was there. I saw Mr. Wamsley there. It was 35-0.
What was I saying?
So, we did really well. Our political involvement club, we had, two weeks ago, we met with Mr. Frank Acavetti. He came in and explained to us his campaign and what it was all about. And today, we went and door to door and tried to encourage everybody to just get out there and vote, no matter who they're voting for, just get involved.
How was that experience?
It was fun.
Was it?
Yeah, it was actually pretty fun. Yeah.
Good. How many kids?
We had three out today. And there were three out last week, three different each time. So we're kind of like, we're all in everything else. So we're trying to just like partner off and go off.
That's awesome.
Manufacturing Day is next Friday. We have 30 students that are going to be involved in that. The Young Americans are coming to Richmond. That is their group of college students. And they, it's performing arts, so it's like singing and dancing and those kinds of things. And they hold a workshop. And that's for all grades. It's K through 12.
Right.
It's K through 12. And they'll be here on October 13th and 14th. Those are the workshop days. And the 15th is the concert. And that's, there'll be a concert to show off what everybody learned in the workshop. And then the actual, the Young Americans group will have their concert. And that's, that's open to all, all students. They don't have to be from Richmond, this workshop, but Richmond's just hosting it. And then homecoming is a district-wide thing this year, which is really exciting that we're getting everybody involved. Our parade's going to include all the classes from kindergarten up. Each class will have their own banner. And then all the groups in the elementary school, middle school, high school that want to be a part of it. And then taffel, taffel football and taffel cheer will also be part of the parade. The spirit days are district-wide. So every school, high school, middle, and elementary have the same spirit day. And it's Wizard of Oz theme, if you haven't seen the poster. And we have some fun days, like Emerald City, Green and Bling, and Witch, Witch is Witch, Twin Day, Twister Day, that's Mismatch, those kinds of things. Oh, Lions, Tigers, Bears, oh my. So it's Lions and Tigers gear and Bears gear, too.
Fun.
And then the actual dance is Saturday, this coming Saturday, and the game is Friday. So that concludes my report.
Awesome. The Young Americans Day. Who brought this? And are kids getting information to sign up? What, what is it? I mean, aside from what you told us.
Yeah, the choir, it's the choir boosters that have, that are throwing this. Yeah. And, and the information's out everywhere. There's posters all over. And at the odd, they have the actual registration forms for any kids that come there because the odd is any district as well.
So the workshops are after school, like at night? Is that what you're?
Well, on Thursday, because those are half-days. Even, I think they're half-days. And so it starts right after school from 11:00 to whenever. And then they break for dinner. And then, I know that they work around schedules. So if you have a sports practice or something, they leave. And then there's a group of the, the Young Americans that pull you and teach you what you missed when you were out. And I think it goes all day Friday. It goes through school on Friday, but Thursday is not until after school.
Okay.
It was actually Mrs. Newman, our choir teacher and the choir boosters, brought this idea, well, I want to say about a year ago. She stopped me in the hallway and I, I said I would support her 100% as they worked through the details. And so it's been marketed outside of Richmond to draw other students to come to this. And so I have to give kudos to Mrs. Newman and the choir boosters because they're the ones that have organized it and really promoted it within among our students and so forth.
Haley, homecoming week starts a week from?
Today, right?
Yes.
So, and that dance is a week from Saturday?
Right, yeah. I stand corrected. So thanks for catching me on that. Thank you.
Can I add real quick, the Young Americans, they are looking for people who have students, our host families, they are working in order to, there will be about 200 of them coming in. If you're interested, we will be knowing that.
And the Young Americans, not only, I mean, they're incredible musicians and dancers. They bring their own band. They bring their own set. So they have their own tech people who come and work. But the message of what they do overall is, is just a lot about like what we just heard. Just building up self-esteem, just great things for, for all kids to hear. And they're really high-quality. What they do is really high-quality work.
Very cool.
So, yeah, it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next, Superintendent and Legislative State.
I want to start by just updating on a public comment from the previous meeting regarding pay to participate. This year, we did move to an online pay to participate. And we're really trying to get all families to utilize the online system. And the parent who was up here at the last meeting spoke about her concern regarding that. You know, I have to, when we talked back in August, and I followed up with her on a conversation last week, I left the conversation as we were going to be looking into it. She left the conversation as I was going to get back to her. So there was a little miscommunication on both of our parts, but we talked through it. We, we're working on creating an option for parents to, who have, may not have a credit card or a check that they can do online. Part of it is logistics that we're trying to work with to make sure all the money is accounted for. She did mention that there are some families that are, may not have chosen athletics because of the pay to participate fee. I met with our two dean of students last week regarding this. And there's a couple of situations, but they have been working individually with those families. Some have, they've created like a payment plan for families. Some, there's been, it's a true hardship. So we've had outside funding sources help those parents, like we've done in years past. So I've asked both Mr. Reinhardt and Mrs. Borwick just to keep a pulse on it, to make sure that there's no student who wants to play athletics who's being turned away because of the pay to participate fee and so forth. So I felt, I felt it was a positive at the end of the conversation and following up. So I just felt it was important for you to know that from that. And that's, in talking with Mrs. Teltor, we talked about following up on some of the public comment where appropriate to keep the public informed about what, how we follow up and what we go through. Couple of updates in the, in the school. Today, we had our PD, district-wide, is our second PD with the teachers. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Van Sludger. I know Mr. Kochen did that earlier today to her. She, there is a website, donorschoose.org, where teachers can put information out there that they're looking forward to enhance their classrooms or do certain things in their classroom. Well, Mrs. Van Sludger was awarded that. There were some individuals, Target came through and helped sponsor, and there were some other individuals that helped sponsor. So congratulations to her for doing that. You know, it's, it's one of the great things that our, that our teachers do across the district. They're looking outside the box of how they can make learning fun and engaging. And some of the things that she got were, it's titled Little Minds on the Move. And she got some bouncy chairs for students that constantly need to be moving, some adjustable laptop trays so students don't have to be in their desk, they can be sitting throughout the classroom. She got like a yoga ball or a bouncer that kids can sit on. And again, it addresses their, their kinesthetic needs in the classroom. So again, I thank her for thinking outside the box and looking, looking for things that are going to help her students. I'm excited, next week, we launch our SAT prep class using $31A. We have a, one of our new English teachers is, who's also a reading specialist and also has done SAT. So one of the hours of the day, we have a schedule where we're identifying students that if we can give a little extra support for, that can do well, our hope is that they're going to do well in the SAT. That's the new state assessment in the 11th grade. Whether it's the ACT or SAT, it opens scholarship opportunities for students. So I thank Ms. Michonne and Joe and the team for doing, putting all the work together and creating the schedule for that. It's a rotation, so it's, the student won't be missing a specific hour, but there is, they'll be pulled out of an hour part of the month so that they can get this extra support needed. So really, again, thinking outside the box of how we can help our students within the confines of the hours we have. As Haley mentioned, we have the homecoming. There's no place like home. In your, in front of you is the poster. I met with the student government and kind of guess, got some ideas. I want to thank Printall for designing that. They are extremely creative and they help the school district a lot in many ways. We actually have those posters. I was supposed to pick them up today, but I got there a little late. So I'll pick them up tomorrow so that we can start distributing them in town to businesses and begin advertising them. Since we put this on Facebook, which was last week, which talked about the different events that Haley spoke of, it's reached over 3,800 families and people on Facebook about the homecoming. So I'm excited that, that this is going to be a true community-wide event and bringing it back. One thing that we need to mention is that following the football game, there will be a fireworks show. Pyro Joes is again sponsoring that. If you attended last year, it's a phenomenal fireworks show. So I encourage you to attend. It will be a great event. Legislative update. The legislators have been back for a couple of days since summer break. And now they're off again. Most of them are off till the November election. But just some things to update. And the supplemental school aid with the budget that was approved eliminated the ability for school districts to bill other districts if they come after count date. There's a supplemental school age 25E that's putting that back in place. We typically bill for other districts that are outside of Macomb County that we may get after count date, as well as they'll bill us if we have students that leave. It's, it's, I don't know necessarily if you think about the paperwork involved in it, if it actually benefits any district. But there's supplemental aid that's going back, 25E. I'm going to hold off on the third grade reading because I think that's important for everybody to understand. They've changed the sinking fund legislation. We currently do not have a sinking fund. I know several districts around us are going for a sinking fund in November. But the new legislation allows you to use sinking fund for technology needs going forward. A lot of districts use the sinking fund for roofs, maintenance, infrastructure costs. So that might be something as a board we want to consider going down in the future. Especially those, as, you know, though most of the roofs were repaired, we do have a large chunk of a roof that were passed or not repaired, as well as the blocktop surfaces throughout the district and some other things. They are looking at changing elections from the May and August date to a March and June date. This is typically, has a negative effect on districts when they could choose because of weather-related and the timing of them, turnout was lower. But that is on the horizon. I bring that up because we do have the non-homestead millage renewal. And though I'm very confident it will pass, to continue it being a renewal, if it didn't, we could go back in May and go for a second for a renewal. After that, it would be considered an increase. So this is something I'm watching because depending on how the election goes in November, what does that affect for our district? But it is interesting moving from May to August to a March and June date. Third grade reading. I put, put in front of you a copy of the conference report for the public. This has been talked about multiple times here, probably a year and a half. And it's on its way to the governor for signature. And in essence, in a very simplified version, is if a student does not pass the M-step in third grade, the law is written that they are not to go on to fourth grade. Now, there are some things in the law that provide some exemptions. What's most disturbing to me is the two of the three, the most important people in making that decision, when you look at the parent, teacher, and principal making that decision for the child, two of them have been left out of the legislation, which is the teacher and the principal. The appeal comes to, as it's written right now, the superintendent. And though I try to know a lot about the school, I am not the expert in the classroom that is the teacher, that is the principal in the building. That's where the decision needs to be made, as a team decision. So why that was ever taken out, I can only speculate. There is some legislation in there for students with IEPs to, if the team decides it's not in the best interest, to not hold them back. But if you're looking for a good read, I would encourage you to read it. It is on the way to the governor's desk to be signed into law. And so this statewide, third graders, about, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but about 50% of them on the new M-step. And keep in mind, this is the second year of the M-step. And the second year, it changed again. So it's a, it's a moving target. 50% of the third graders approximately statewide did not pass the M-step, according to the proficiency standards. So in logistically, 50% of the kids would not be going on to fourth grade, according to the state law. This was passed in Florida and it was repealed in Florida. It is, it is, I think, we are the only state now that has a third grade retention policy. So I would encourage people to contact the governor's office to let them know their opinion before he signs it into law. It's interesting. I think that's all I can say. The, the last thing, last time I mentioned some changes in the transportation bill that they were going to look for. And it was interesting because later on after that board meeting, there was a proposal to change the way transportation is provided. Currently, we have to provide transportation for non-public school students in our district. So we transport students to St. A's, St. Pete's by law. And that's been an ongoing practice since, at least before Proposal A in the 90s. The legislators made a two-word change to the law. And they wanted to add non-public and public schools. And the impact of this two-word change would be, is if there was a charter school that opened up in our district, we would be obligated to transport those students to that charter school. That legislation did not pass, did not, what, did not go forward. So it is, in essence, a, I don't say anything is dead because things resurrect in the, in the state. But it's not part of the package now, which was, when you look at a cost, that would be a huge cost the district would have to absorb for students that are not attending our district and that receive the same foundation allowance that we do, because we're at the minimum foundation allowance. But yet, they don't have the transportation cost, but we do. So that's something that I am keeping my eye on because, as I said, sometimes things resurrect in a different form or get tagged. So this is one that we've been advocating against passing. Other than that, we are nearing the end of the first month of school. It's hard to believe. Things, knock on wood, things are going really good. So we have parent-teacher conferences in about two weeks. So the parents will be getting information regarding that district-wide. And it's really kind of a progress check among how kids are doing. Some, sometimes kids need some, a little more attention in adapting to different grade levels. And it's opportunity to begin that conversation formally. Many of our staff have already begun conversations like that with our staff, our parents. So that's it.
Thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. This document, Brian gave us some stuff here regarding the superintendent's evaluation. And I'm bringing this up because, as we all know, things have changed with respect to doing the superintendent's evaluation. School board members have to be trained. And you have to have a document that is approved by the state that you use for your superintendent's evaluation. Brian gave us some stuff in our weekly report on Friday from an attorney, who is it, Gary Collins? Gary Collins? That the MISD, Mike DeValt, the superintendent, and this Gary Collins have come up with a document that they are calling the Macomb County Model for Superintendent Evaluation. They've developed it. And if you know in our report from Brian, superintendents voted at their superintendent meeting that this was, they voted to approve this to be an option to do the Macomb model, if I understand what you said, Brian?
Originally, it was asked of us to vote to endorse this as the model. Many of us did not feel comfortable doing that. Though I don't look at you as a boss, we work together. Ultimately, you are my boss, the seven members here. And to tell my boss what instrument you're going to use to evaluate, and he didn't sit right with me. So what we did is we approved that this is one of the options available to board members.
So I, I had an issue with the fact that there was a, two people that were deciding what, what the superintendent's evaluation was going to be without any input from any board member in all of Macomb County. That, that was my issue. And I called Brian about it and had some questions, trying to find out, you know, who do I get information from? But for the last, at least six months, I've been getting communication about making sure that your superintendent evaluation is approved by the state. And we knew that six months ago, that we were good. It was one of the evaluations that approved that you can use. So looking for how are we going to get training? Now, this has come up that- Now, this has come up that, you know, some guru thinks they know and have created this evaluation, and the only way you're going to get training, board members, is if you approve, if you use this Macomb model. MASB also offers, I think, two, two, two evaluation options. We stopped using the MASB model three or four years ago, I think, and went to the model that we're using now. Brian, you said whatever the name of the company is, that the evaluation that we use, but I don't remember what you said, the company, but we could look to this company to see if they could train us, if we wanted to stay with our evaluation. Or do we want to look into this Macomb model? And we have to understand too that there are some districts in Macomb County that evaluate their superintendents on different timelines than what we do. And the law states you have to do, you have to make these changes with respect to your evaluation sometime within this 16, 17 school year. You have to be trained on it before the end of the year. The evaluation goes on the website. You have to show that board members have been trained, blah, 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 all that stuff. So my questions to everyone are, does anyone else have an issue that we're, and Brian, don't take this the wrong way, but we're being forced in my mind that here's, here's an evaluation we've created for you, you're going to use it, this is what we say you need to use, and we'll train you on it. If you don't use it, you're on your own. Because other, what I started to say, other districts, Brian's year has already started. His new evaluation year has already started. So now, and we're basing it on the document that we have. So you go and you change to this model, we go away, so we've already started an evaluation year under this evaluation. And do we want to continue to evaluate, Brian, and the timelines that we do? Or, because some districts, did you say go January to December?
Some districts evaluate their superintendent from a November, December to a November, December, that year period. A lot of them changed to that due to the election is being moved for school boards in the fall. Sometimes it could become challenging to do an evaluation if you have new school board members who seat in January and really haven't worked with the superintendent. And we've had a couple of those conversations in ours. And so that's why a lot, some, I can't give you a number, but I know of about three off the top of my head that do it sometime in November, December, to that time period. You definitely have the student data information from the previous school year by then. This year, we, it was publicly released in the end of August, I think it was, and I think I talked to you guys in September, our first meeting in September about that. Where I'm always, you know, we look at the data, we do everything in the evaluation prior to April 30th or April 1st, and then accept the student data because we didn't have it. So that's an option as a board, if you want to, you want to shift the timeline. The county, if you don't mind, it's, on the county perspective is, and I put in here the letter from Gary Collins for you. Gary is one, technically one of our attorneys that we have used and approved. He does represent boards across the county. I would say at least 75% of the boards, if not more. He was part of the researchers, I guess if you will, or people who helped wrote the evaluation law from the legislators, in trying to get it as school-friendly as possible, even though they had a different agenda. So when Mike and Gary met, and I think they actually had a couple of superintendents on the committee.
But no school board members.
But no school board members. And that was part of the concern when it was brought to the superintendents. Some of us expressed that, you know, for me to tell my bosses what instrument to use didn't sit right with me, and yet alone to have input from school boards on their perspective. And so that's why it was decided that we would endorse it as an option for boards, but not the option for boards. So there's a sheet in here, I think it's the third sheet, and it's the staple copy that says, it's addressed to me from Mr. Collins, and section, page two of that gives you a, currently the evaluation that I have, that we currently use, has 10 sections with the 11th being student achievement. And this evaluation, and I gave you some short versions, long versions in that part, narrows it down to approximately seven, six with a seventh one optional. And again, his backup, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, and I gave you a copy of my current evaluation just to see a comparison. He's indicating that these 10 that we currently use fit into those seven in some fashion. On a side note, the same process you guys are going through, we're doing with my administrative team right now to be certified through Danielson's for the teacher evaluation. I will be going through, the dates haven't yet been released, but there's in October and the beginning of November so that I can be certified to the administrator evaluation, all to be in compliance with the law. The ISD's position is, I have not heard that they are going to provide any training to boards other than the Macomb model. So if we continue with our, our model, we'd have to use an outside company to come in and train the board.
Even though their areas fit into our model as well?
Correct, because the law, the way the law reads it, and I'm going to paraphrase it or summarize it, it talks about you've got to keep the evaluation instrument that, like Danielson's for the teachers, with fidelity. So the first part of the teacher evaluation is the Danielson domains. We aren't touching that, we aren't changing that. The administrators' evaluation, which is Reeves', we aren't touching that. We can add to the pieces, like we have to add the student achievement data. And with the teachers, last year in November, we had to add the, consider the BB factors, which are nine other factors. So we'd have to be trained on this model because it's different than the other model.
And what model is the one that we're currently using?
What's the name of that model, do you?
And I wrote it down on a sticky note, and I'm drawing a blank. It's not the, the school board, is it? I'm drawing a blank. I had on a sticky note, and I didn't grab it off my desk, I knew that was going to be asked of me, and I forgot.
This isn't a modified MASB?
No.
Version? It's not, okay.
No, we, it was take, we went completely away from MASB and went to this.
Okay. I mean, I have to say that, I mean, I, I think there were flaws in, in putting the Macomb County one together because there weren't board member voice present in the process. I think there's some good things in this document, though. So I don't necessarily know that I think to not, not to consider the document just because the process to get there was flawed, you know? But I also understand that we are sort of, kind of stuck in this place where, you know, you've started a year of work and you have a number of years in, thinking it's this one tool, and then for us to switch gears.
Well, and my question too was, if we switch gears, how does that work? You've started in one process and now you're starting in the middle, where does that fall into all these rules and regulations?
I'm just, in what I have read, it's just, I don't, it's just a matter of choosing one at this point, but before the end of October, I thought was the deadline, and just saying that's what you're using. I don't think that they care that you're changing.
From the legislators' perspective, it's not a best practice, but you could change it at any time.
Right. As long as it's on a website.
As a board, you could change the teacher evaluation.
Public.
But I would do that. We could change the administrator, but at some point, I think it's by the end of October, you've got to define what that evaluation is. So that on an administrator and a teacher, it's pretty much a school year. You have the ability on a superintendent, it could be the school year, it could be July 1 to June 30th. You could look at options, if this is something you want to move towards, we could, we could finish up the one we currently have, but it'd be like a six-month eval and start the year cycle at that point. If, the key, though, is the training, and that's going to be the challenging part.
Is the MISD picking up the bill for that training?
For the training for their version?
Right.
Yes, it's no cost.
So there'd be no, and if we trained on this other one, I'm sure that there would be some kind of a cost.
There's an outside fee.
And the, and the training date is really October 13th. The date was September 20th, which is.
This Thursday.
Which is Wednesday or Thursday. And then the other date is October 13th.
Right.
And we, and we all have to be trained. It just can't be one, because initially, they talked about just, you know, your board president could be trained and then trained everybody else. Now it's, everybody has to go to the training.
And what about newly elected people?
I don't know what happens.
Or appointed people?
I guess that would be something they'd have to, we'd have to figure out once that time comes.
Right.
Because they're only offering it, they probably haven't even thought about that part of it. You know, that come January 1, there could be new people.
Right. Or appointed people, or whatever.
Yeah, or appointed, and.
Right.
They would have to get trained because they can't be part of the valuation.
Right.
If they're not.
But that also means if we were to.
Just the current, we would train now at a cost to the district, and then.
Train again.
Other people will have to be trained again at a cost to the district later.
If anybody leaves, correct.
Well, I'd like to find out what, if we could talk to the ISD and see what their plan is for retraining, if it's, if they're going to continue to pick up the cost, which I doubt. But if they are, it'd be good to know versus us continuously picking up the cost. I mean, I know they're doing these two for free, but I'd like, if we could ask them tomorrow. Because really, tomorrow is the deadline to register, so we have to know by tomorrow.
This, there's a sheet in the back packet of that, it's got the, about the two train, this, I just got this Friday.
Yeah.
And I don't know when, when you guys got this.
We had an email on Friday, too.
Yeah, we did.
And it's this Thursday.
Yep.
And the deadline's tomorrow.
Right.
And that's a week day.
Exactly. Well.
A lot of people work.
Do we think, do we think we would want to go with the Macomb model or stick with what we have? Because if we want to go to the Macomb model, then yeah, I could find out tomorrow what the answers to that question.
I'd like to find out.
But we'd also have to register ourselves.
Yes, everybody.
Which I could, when I made the call, I could also register everybody, too.
It feels like it's difficult to make a decision when we don't really know what training this is going to demand of us and the cost of it for the district. It feels difficult to make a decision about that information, for me.
I could tell you the administrator training, going through the consulting or the fee, is 40 hours, 40 hours that they have to put in to go through to get certified, certified. My training for them is approximately 24 hours. But I don't know, that's just the seat time. I don't know what that is in terms of what additional video, what additional training, what additional certification test, that I don't know yet. So I'm guessing if you bring in an outside person, it's going to be somewhere in that ballpark of two to three days, because they want to make sure that you're doing the instrument with validity.
But the ISD's.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
I don't think she does it.
I was just going to say.
No, I'm not saying the ISD does it. I think, I think.
One four-hour night. Wow.
I don't know what the ISD's training entails, other than.
Right.
It's, it starts at 5:30 on the 29th or October 13th. I'm going.
I think it's all pretty mishmash, mishmash. I think it's all being thrown on us with the idea that, okay, here it is, folks, we've decided this for you, and now, like you said, here, you get the information Friday, you're training, you have to be trained, and pick ours are too bad.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a disservice to school boards, school districts. There should have been a little more collaboration and a little more.
A little more notice.
A little more notice and a little more time, because I don't know if else, all of us are able to do October 13th even.
I'd have to take the night off work, I know that.
This sounds like, though, this presentation is open to all Macomb County school board members and superintendents. Training materials will be available for those in attendance. It sounds like it's something that you're going to be taking with you as well. Training materials will be available.
So we're going to train ourselves?
What my, I talked to Ms., Dr. Pritchett today. She wasn't directly involved with this. Her understanding was this could be a train the trainer model, where someone from the board goes. I don't want to say that, that that is, because I'm not 100% sure.
Right, right, right.
But that is one that she thought.
So we're training new people coming in?
If you had someone who goes, but again, I'm not 100% sure. I literally had a phone call on the way over here.
I don't know if I find out where it really is. I know it's a location.
So we want to know what exactly this means, this training, and we want to know what the training would cost for the document we already have before we decide?
Right.
Yes?
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I will do that.
This is one of those examples of a law passed without realizing the impact. Because when you read that third grade bill, there are things that they're assuming boards are going to put in place, but there's no money attached to it. So it'll be interesting.
Well, I just glanced at the, at the bill, the language. I mean, I've talked before about this bill, the third grade reading bill, and how it's bad for children. And whoever thought that it was a good idea to put this down and make it happen, they just, they don't understand children, and they don't understand classrooms, obviously. But language in here is interesting because it talks about having a, an early literacy coach to train teachers in data analysis and using data to differentiate instruction. What teacher isn't doing that already? Teachers already are doing that on a daily basis. Train teachers to diagnose and address reading deficiencies. Teachers are doing that on a daily basis. Legislators are just, pardon my French, hell-bent to blame teachers for something that it's not, it's not about teachers. It's, it's, it's not. And this is just a prime example of, of legislation that, over the course of how many years now? One after the other, after the other, that is just, has language in it that is horrible for children, horrible for children, and blaming people who, who love and care about children. And it just is sickening. Amanda Price, the legislature from the west side of the state, who has been the person to get this into law, the person. Phil Pavlov, our own local person, right, who is the chair of this committee. Amanda Price says specifically and clearly that it were businesses, businesses who helped her get in office, brought this to her, and she was darn certain she was going to get it passed. Doesn't have anything to do with children, doesn't have anything to do with classrooms. And it's just, ugh, absolutely appalling, on so many levels appalling. And the fact that teachers and principals aren't going to have a voice in what happens. Pay attention come November, people. Just pay attention. Very frustrating.
Yes, it is. Does anyone else have any other items of interest? No? Okay. Next is our public comment. Portion of our meeting, if there's anyone in attendance who would like to come up and address the board, you can do so. The podium is up here, there's a card, you can leave your name and telephone number, and it is not a question and answer period, but if there is a question you have, we will get back with you. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone? Nope? Okay. Next, action item. Approval of Richmond Girls Fast Pitch Association donation. This was brought to us two weeks ago by the girls, the girls softball, it is a fence, fixing a fence out on the softball fields. And so I am looking for, I believe there's a sample resolution if someone would like to make it.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and accept the donation from the Richmond Girls Fast Pitch Association for fence repairs on the district softball diamonds and batting cages as presented at the September 12, 2016 Board of Education and in accordance with District Policy 7230.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Just a real big thank you.
Yes.
And this organization and for all the other organizations.
And this organization, for all the other organizations that pitch in and do this, no pun intended, this is a pitch in, sorry.
Wow, that was, that was smooth.
Yeah. But it's, it's just one of the reasons that opportunities for kids happen, and it's a, it's a really good thing when organizations do this. So thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I can't believe I'm going to say this at 7:50, but we are adjourned.